I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight we have a special meeting of the Board. I have Mr. Liu here, I have Mrs. Dow, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Zahn, Dr. Tidal, Mrs. Iaccone, Mrs. Albin, Mr. Carey, and Mr. Fattabine. I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to take a moment and say that this has been a very challenging year for everyone, the community and the Board. And I've tried this past year to work in a transparent manner as much as I possibly could, and I hope that that will continue. And as we move forward, I hope Board members will do our due diligence, be respectful, work together for the children of Fairfield. And with that, I will entertain a motion to move to an executive session. Oh, I'm looking at something, a wrong piece of paper, I beg your pardon. Thank you. We have election of temporary Chairman and Secretary of the recommended motion in accordance with the bylaws. Superintendent Dr. David Tidal will serve as temporary Chairman and Secretary during the election of Board Officers. Mrs. Zahn, seconded by Mrs. Albin. All in favor? Pass this unanimously. Dr. Tidal, it's all yours.
Thank you. The next item of business is the election of officers. The first is for the position of Board of Education Chairman. So I'll open the floor for nominations for Chairman. Mrs. Zahn.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Mr. Matola for Chairman.
Mr. Matola has been nominated. Mr. Liu.
I'd like to nominate Sue Brand, please.
Mrs. Brand has been nominated. And the other nominations. Seeing no other nominations, I'll declare that nominations are closed. We'll now proceed to vote. All those in favor of Mr. Matola, please raise your hand. Six, all in favor of Mrs. Brand. Three, Mr. Matola, you are the Chairman.
Do you want to switch now, John?
No.
Okay.
May we finish the officers?
Yes.
We'll now do the election for Board of Education Vice Chairman. Open the nominations. Would anybody like to make a nomination for Vice Chairman? Mr. Carey.
And Mrs. Iaccone.
Mrs. Iaccone has been nominated. Mr. Fattabine.
I'd like to nominate Sue Dow.
Mrs. Dow.
Dow.
Are there any other nominations? There being no other nominations, I'll declare that nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mrs. Iaccone, please raise your hand. Five, all those in favor of Mrs. Dow. Four, Mrs. Iaccone is the Vice Chair by a vote of five to four. We'll now move to Board of Education Secretary. Are there any nominations for Secretary? Mrs. Brand.
I'll nominate Ms. Brand.
Mr. Liu has been nominated for Secretary. Mrs. Albin.
I'll nominate Mrs. Zahn, please.
Mrs. Zahn has been nominated. Any other nominations for Secretary? All right. All those in favor of Mr. Liu as Secretary, please signify by raising your hand. Four, all those in favor of Mrs. Zahn, please signify by raising your hand. Five, Mrs. Zahn is the Secretary by a vote of five to four. Congratulations. My duties are now complete.
I just, you know, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you all for your support. And I also want to thank Sue Brand for her year of service as the Chairman. It was a tough year, and we did a lot of things over the last year, and I want to thank her for doing that. Just a couple of comments before we move on. We have a lot of work to do this year, and that's obvious to all of us. We all understand that. I really believe that we need to work as a cohesive body. We're going to have significant issues with the budget and with facilities this year, to name a few. And I really think we need to trust each other and trust each other's judgment. We need to listen to each other and respect each other. We need to respect our differing views, because God knows, we all are going to have differing views. That's just the way it is. But I think it's extremely important that when the Board acts as a majority, we all need to respect the majority of the Board, and that includes the minority who may disagree with the majority. And that's something we need to keep in mind. And I'm not lecturing to anybody on this Board. This includes me also. I also believe that we need to support Dr. Tidal and the administration. Now, that doesn't mean that we kowtow to him. We ask him very tough questions. I know, that would be all right with you. We ask tough questions. We have frank discussions on the issues, and we move on. But we have to keep in mind that he's an educator, and we're laypeople. And at times, we need to defer to him. But again, we ask him tough questions. That's our job as Board members. I also think we all need, including myself, need to review and understand what our authority is as Board members. And if you look at the bylaws, it's important to look at those once in a while over the next year, just to remind ourselves of what our authority is as Board members. So I would ask that all of us do that. And I'm sure we've been doing that, because we're going to talk about the bylaws this week. And just finally, I'll, I promise to support all of you. I promise to be responsive, to listen to you. I will be responsive to the public. I'll be open-minded on all the issues. I think I've been open-minded over the last five-plus years on this Board. And I promise to continue our transparency to the public. I think that's vitally important. And with that, I think the next thing on our agenda tonight is the review of the bylaws. And someone help me here. It's my understanding that the Policy Committee, along with Dr. Tidal, reviewed the bylaws at a meeting, and Dr. Tidal made some suggestions with respect to changes, and that we also received some suggestions from, I believe it was Mrs. Iaccone, Mrs. Brand, and Mrs. Albin. Is that a fair statement? Maybe I can direct that to...
Yeah.
Mrs. Zahn? Okay. Yes, Mrs. Iaccone.
I just wanted to comment on my bylaw changes actually weren't changes. I was just trying to point out what is already in our bylaws. So I apologize for the confusion.
Okay.
But these things are actually already in our bylaws. I was just trying to highlight them for some members' benefit.
Okay. So why don't I, if the Board is okay with this, ask Dr. Tidal to perhaps explain the suggestions that he made?
Okay, thank you. As I reviewed with the Policy Committee, you know, when we met as a group with Nick in the summer, we talked about streamlining the Board's operation. I know the Board talked to me about, you know, can you give us some suggestions on how the Board can operate more effectively, more efficiently? And I made some suggestions on that night, some of which had to go into policy changes, some of which, you know, we've enacted. So I think the Board's been responsive to that. So I bring that, I bring these changes to you in that same spirit, where I believe that the Board can get its work done effectively, efficiently, and trying to, as I've lived with some of this organizational structure now for five months, try to bring some clarity to it. So let me just go through a couple of the highlights. Some of it is simply housekeeping. One thing that's very confusing, I think it's confusing to the public as well, is the two types of meetings that we have listed in our bylaws. You know, we have the business meeting, we have the education meeting. Yet we do business at both meetings. The agendas are different. Many Boards operate with simply one meeting called a regular meeting, and there's a sort of a set agenda format, which I put in here as well. And any other meeting of the Board that can be called becomes a special meeting. And the special meeting has usually a shorter, more focused agenda. Usually it's one or two items. And so that, a lot of the red marks for this are just changing some of the language to reflect that. So we have a business meeting that follows a protocol, follows the same protocol every time, and it does not change, for example, I didn't suggest any changes to public comment at any of our meetings or anything like that. But that's the one sort of cleanup item there. In the, I did, and I saw Mrs. Albin had this as well, so she can speak to it more than I can. I did suggest, with the committee structure that we now have on the Board, we have three committees, and therefore I didn't think it was necessary for there to be advisory committees, because really, almost anything that comes forward could be assigned to one of those three committees. But I think that advisory committees were there before you had the committee structure, but I'll defer to Mrs. Albin on that one, because she really had that on her list. The other thing I put in here, I think this was actually based on the discussion we had at the committee meeting, was to encourage Board members to go to CAPE-sponsored workshops, not just new Board members in that section. I do suggest, though I know some people, you know, again, I suggest things, knowing that some people may not love them, but, that conducting four meetings at four different schools throughout the calendar year causes some issues for us. I think there's probably other ways we can get ourselves out into the community. There is an expense associated with that. The sound system, as you saw, one of our ill-fated attempts. It's anywhere from $300 to $500 to hold a meeting out at a school. So I would suggest, and all the stuff is here, it generally works, that we have the meetings here. However, there may be meetings we need to have out in a school, because if it's going to be a hot topic, then of course, we go out to a school and we arrange for that. So we probably will end up at a school, if history is any guide. I suggest that the regular meetings, that the second and fourth Tuesday would be typically when we have meetings, or the Board members should reserve that, but I think we'll find as we get better at our work, that the schedule I proposed here does not really need the Board to meet twice every single month all year long. And so on the schedule, that reflects that. It's not one meeting every month, and if we need an extra meeting, we can always schedule one. But, you know, this year, in October, we only had one meeting, and everything went fine. And November's always a tough month, because next year's an election, so there'd be this lame duck meeting, which you probably don't want to have anyway. So December, you typically only have one because of the holidays. So it's not that big a change, but I think it moves us in the right direction. I took Consent Agenda off, because I don't think we really use it. It just seemed like a bookkeeping thing, pretty much what we do. And I never had luck with Consent Agenda in my previous district, so I figured that really, we just approved minutes under a consent agenda. That was pretty much it. So the order of business, then, is, you know, you have a regular meeting schedule, and this is the format for all the meetings. And we would do the presentations, public comment, and reports upfront at every meeting, and then just go old business, new business, and adjourn. And that does allow for reports at every meeting, but we had talked about, particularly in the summer, of, you know, keeping the reports brief, and if there's minutes enclosed, we don't need to repeat those. So that's also part of it. Special meetings would have a simple, much simpler agenda. Just the Pledge of Allegiance and the business items, and an adjournment. I think that's pretty much the highlights of it. So I'll stop there.
So did anybody want to comment on that? Mrs. Albin?
I would just add to, on page five, the advisory committees that Dr. Tidal mentioned, and I've noted once before, this language predates our new and current committee structure. This was in the event a committee was needed to do something. And we established the three committees a few years ago, which were divided up to pretty much cover the work that we need to do. Eliminating the language, as is shown in the red that Dr. Tidal shows, does not preclude us from forming ad hoc committees when we need to. If we need to, if it's work that can't be accommodated in the three standing committees, I would also agree that deleting this would be good housekeeping and make this a clearer document. So that's what I would note for that. To Dr. Tidal's comment about our meetings out in the schools, I know that that's very important to some of my fellow Board members, and I've spent quite a bit of time trying to think, what could we do that would be, first of all, cost neutral and not cost us, as these meetings do have an expense to them? And what could we do that, if we had all our meetings here on-site, what could we do that would get us out into the schools for the purpose that we really want to be there for, which is community relations and to connect with the parents of the PTAs and in the school buildings? And one thought that I've had, if the Board would be interested in it, is through some structure, whether we did it by our committees, so three people each time, once a year, twice a year, would commit to being at one or two PTA meetings, to go out, see the school, be with the PTA, hear their concerns. I think that's largely what people want when we're in their schools, and perhaps not to be sitting through our approvals of textbooks and EDO 42 forms. They would like us to focus on them and their school. So if Board members would think that that's a good approach, while deleting and eliminating the four meetings, I would suggest that we would include something that would make a commitment that the Board, not as a whole, but maybe by our committees, would go out to PTA meetings at least once or twice a year. I think, oh, on page nine of the document, it's Section 1, Regular Meetings, all the red language that is deleted, and then you have the sentence, "All Board of Education meetings shall adjourn at 11:00 PM unless there's a majority vote." That actually requires a two-thirds vote by Robert's rules to suspend the rules. And actually, I'll pass these over to the Chairman. I purchased these for everyone to have a copy of them while at the CAPE convention as a little crib sheet for us, for our meetings. I don't have any other questions on Dr. Tidal's work, and I would just say that the items that I have, that you all received, they're there for your consideration. If you feel they're important, wonderful. If not, we don't have to do anything with them.
Anybody else? Mrs. Zahn?
Just quickly on that point, I'd be willing for a compromise on the out-of-building meetings, but putting in bylaws about committees going to PTA meetings, I don't think that's a bylaw item.
Through the Chair, I'm not offended. I just offered it as an idea.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that's fine, and we should be doing stuff like that anyway when invited to meetings, but that's not an item for bylaws, so I wouldn't, I would not vote for that.
Yes. Mrs. Brand?
The only other one I had was, I think it's the only other recommendation for a change, was if Board members will look on page four, on the third paragraph, with standing committees at the last sentence of the third paragraph, just say, "Only Board may take action on subcommittee recommendations." To be honest, it's redundant. It is elsewhere in this, but it just emphasizes it again, because we do have subcommittees that do a tremendous amount of work. If you want, I can go through the rest. We did discuss the advisory committees, and my concern was the advisory committee is separate, and I think since it's in our bylaws, it is, does have a different structure. And I think that's valuable. And I also think it serves as a reminder to Board members, because it's in there, that there is another way of doing it if we feel the need. Further, we did come as a Board very close to doing this this past spring. Several members were poised to take action on this, and we pulled back out of deference to Dr. Tidal to give him a chance to get his feet underneath him. And I think if we remove this at this time, I think it would be disingenuous to the public about something that we had made a lot of progress with in the spring. Now, in terms of the other, most of the other recommendations that are in here were, you know, all following suit with just changing the wording. The only other issue I had was, I do think that we should still keep open Board discussion in our meetings on a regular basis. I just think that there are things that come up in between, and they don't necessarily, it just gives the Board some flexibility that it might not otherwise have. And I think the only other thing I had were the number of meetings. My only concern with the number of meetings is, we don't have actually, we, prior to that, last year's, we had four meetings in January. This time, we'd be scheduling two. And when we're talking about a budget that we have in a budget document, and perhaps it will be smaller, but we still have a $140-plus million budget to review, and quite honestly, be as fluent as we can in a very short span of time, I'm not comfortable with doing that in such a tight timeframe. I'd like to afford us a little bit more time to review it.
Let me just comment on the open Board discussion piece, and then I haven't been through the budget here, so I'll defer on that. But that's been a needlesome item for me, because I think if there are issues that come up, or Board members have issues, I think there's other ways of handling them than bringing them up cold at the Board table. I think if there's an issue that the whole Board should discuss that somebody has, then it should go on the agenda for discussion. It should be noted to the public that we're going to talk about it, and it should get on the agenda. If it's something that's a relatively small issue, or just something somebody heard, or something somebody's unhappy with, then I think they should feel free to contact me directly, or contact the Chair. But I just think it's, I don't see how anything productive comes from that particular item. I think it sets me and the staff up for some issues that I think we'd rather not go through in public, and so I'd just rather handle those kinds of things that would have come up under open Board discussion another way. I don't want to not discuss the issues, but I just think we can do our business differently. That's all. I'm not saying that there aren't other issues that come out there, but that's what I might make on it. I think we have, on here, I added the two budget meetings in January, so it looks like...
There's three January meetings.
Three January meetings. There's four January meetings, three that actually mention budget.
Right.
So I don't know how that's different, but anyway, that's my take on that. Sorry.
Mrs. Iaccone?
I just wanted to comment on the open Board discussion. I completely understand where you're coming from, and I understand that you wouldn't want to be blindsided, and I would hope that the Board would be respectful of that. For the most part, given the history here, I, we really have been. One of the reasons why I would like to see open discussion remain is because really, what we use of discussion for is, "I went to a play, I went to the award play on Saturday, and it was really amazing, and, you know, blah, 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 blah happened." Or, "I know this program was happening at such-and-such school that had to do with healthy eating, and it really worked. I just wanted to acknowledge them." So if, that's how I see open Board discussion. Do other things come up? They do. But I think it's far, in my tenure on the Board, it's been far and few between. It's more of promoting things in the school system and the good things that are happening here, because, like, believe it or not, we really do have a lot of good things happening in this district. So I would like to see it stay. If there's another way to accomplish that, I'm happy to hear, right, right, I'm happy to hear that, but I do think it's important. And, you know, we can't call each other up and talk on the phone, so this is sort of our way to get things out at the table. But again, I'm respectful of the controversy and being blindsided, and I like to think that that, you know, doesn't happen, and at least does not happen often.
Mrs. Albin?
On the open Board discussion, knowing that there were different views, I was asking people from different Boards this past weekend at our CAPE convention what they do, and many of them have either something on the agenda for correspondence, or moments of pride, something, it has a different title, but it is somewhat specific in that you wouldn't be blindsided. I mean, unless you're being blindsided with great information. So it would be for the kinds of things that Mrs. Iaccone was talking about.
Mr. Fattabine? Well, in general, I seldom like changing bylaws unless there's a compelling reason to do it, or there's something going wrong with the bylaws. I don't know if there's anything really going wrong with these bylaws to compel a change at this point, but, and some of the changes I might have some problems with. One of them is the potential reduction in the number of meetings we have per month, simply because, you know, part of our meetings every month are for our own purpose, to conduct our business. But a lot of the purpose is for informing the public of what we're doing, having the public come in here, at least what we're doing, and have the ability to keep on track as to what the Board's activities are. Sometimes, if you cut that down to one a month, either that one meeting may be excessively long, or even if we are very efficient in getting our business done, the public may not be appraised of everything we do as efficiently and as expeditiously as it might if you had two specific days when you have those meetings. It'd be nice to have maybe two short meetings versus one long meeting, and that way, the public's informed. So I'm a little concerned about the potential for the reduction in the number of meetings as well. In addition, the ability and the section of bylaws for advisory committees, I don't think it's uncommon for a body, in their bylaws or in essence, rules to regulate, to have advisory committees in addition to standing committees. For example, the RTM has five standing committees, but in their regular rules to regulate, they have a provision to have special committees, and the special committees are appointed on special occasions. So I think that feature is nice to have in the bylaws, should it arise. There's a procedure by which that is done, so instead of doing it ad hoc and having a discussion, "How are we going to do it?", the procedure is in there on how it gets done, so I think it makes sense to maintain at least the procedure and the possibility in the bylaws to have that advisory committees, should the need arise. So I certainly like to preserve that ability in the bylaws. With respect to the open discussion, item on the agenda, I see that as just the ability for the Board members to discuss certain things that may concern them in a group. We cannot discuss in a group, absent a meeting, issues independently. So that is our only ability, as a group, to get together and get what we'd call a sense of the body, as to where people are going, what people are thinking, so maybe then it could be put on an agenda item in the future. But I think it's an important general discussion, and not certainly meant to sandbag anyone or to raise issues that may be embarrassing or controversial, but just a means by which the Board can informally discuss certain issues in a group. And I don't know of another means one can do that absent a meeting. So I think it's, doesn't really hurt, it's seldom used of any great, I don't know how many open Board discussions we have, but I can't remember anything being too hot and heavy and controversial. So I don't see it being as a necessary problem, and one in which you may have some discussion in some meetings, and you may have no discussion in some meetings, but it preserves the opportunity to have some informal discussions that are not items on the agenda. So those are my basic thoughts on the proposed revisions, but in general, I'm not even sure I see a compelling need to make any amendments to the bylaws. Mr. Liu?
Thank you. I think Mr. Fattabine makes a lot of sense. You know, I know there are times when you want to clarify things, but I don't think anything that stays in our current rules really makes it unclear. I think our meetings are our teeth. I mean, this is...
I mean, this is, this is us as one entity of nine. If we get rid of these meetings, it lessens the amount of time that we have together as an entity to make the kind of decisions that we need to make. And I think it's a good point, as Mrs. Albin brought up, that, well, we could always put it back, but maybe we can look at it in the reverse way, in that we can keep it, and if we want to cancel a meeting, we can. But I think having those meetings there, especially given light of our really complex schedules, knowing that we can always have these meetings on these twice a month at the regular time, I think helps us keep on top of the amount of work that we have and allows us to be the strong board that we are. I'm afraid if we take away that time, we are going to find that we're going to just end up adding these meetings, and a lot of stuff is going to get away from us. I also agree on the, the open board discussion. Again, from the time that I've watched these meetings and now been involved with them, I've never seen people blindsided them, and, and maybe it's been rare on a mistake on an occasion. But I, I think for the most part, it serves more, it's more helpful for us as a board to have these, these times where we can talk aloud and bring up things that we feel are important, whether they are praise to public events or concerns that we have. And the other thing is, now, I will say this, I've always been confused personally a little bit with the business and the education. I don't mind if we just say we have a regular meeting, personally. I mean, I'll think about it some more, but I still think we should have these regular meetings twice a month. But whether they're all business and all education, to me, it's a kind of blurry line anyway. And that's my feeling about some of this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mrs. Iaccone?
In terms of moving to one agenda, I don't necessarily have an issue with that either. I think there, at one time, was a purpose to the education meeting and a purpose to the business meeting, but it's all faded to none. It's next to near impossible to tell the difference these days, except for public comments at the beginning of one and at the end of another. So I agree with Mr. Liu about streamlining it there. I, I, I'll be honest, I have mixed thoughts on the meetings. I am afraid to move too fast on too much, too much change too fast. That, that does concern me. I would like to streamline our business. I think that's something that we do need to do as a board. I think we're, it's a work in progress. I, I'd like to see some meetings, I think, added back in. I think the fact, for example, that we're meeting in January four times, and then to only meet once in February, and considering we have a break, that makes sense to me. To meet once in March, and then to meet once in April, I don't know, maybe I would add another meeting back in, in that area. You're away again in April for April break, so maybe it makes sense just to meet once in April. But I would possibly have two meetings in March because of all of the vacation time. And, you know, we're meeting twice in May, we're meeting twice in June. I have actually no issue with getting rid of the July meeting, and I'll be honest, this is totally selfish. A lot of us are away, it makes sense, and I have to be, it's pretty common practice across the state that boards don't meet in July or August. They sort of rotate off as their vacation time. I mean, here, the RTM and the Board of Finance do it. I know in other towns, Board of Educations don't meet in July. So I don't, I, I, I would be in favor of getting rid of the July meeting, meeting back again in August. We've only ever met once in August, that's fine, the two in September. And then again, you get back to October and November, do you want to add one back in there? I would be open to hearing more discussion about adding one in there as well. So, but I do think we need to move in a direction where we're streamlining our work, but I just, I caution that we maybe or might be moving too quickly in doing that. So that's, that's what I have to say on that. And then I just have a point of order, Mr. Chairman. Are we, so tonight, we're just going to discuss this as a whole, and then next time, we'll take this page by page.
Yeah, that was gonna...
I'm sort of just addressing things as people come, bring them up.
Al, Mrs. Albin has her hand up, but let me, and I'll get to you, Mrs. Albin, in a second. I, I guess my thought was, we'll see where we are with respect to a consensus on these, and it's, it's not a vote, voting item.
Right.
We have to put it on the next agenda if we want to make some changes. How about, and, go ahead, Mrs. Albin, why don't you go first before I make a suggestion? Go ahead.
Traditional, vote on the bylaws at the organizational meeting, it doesn't have to be listed as a voting item. So if we want to vote on them tonight, we're able to do that. And just looking at the meeting schedule, the number of meetings that have been subtracted from what traditionally we have had, as in the proposed document, are four.
Three, actually.
This document has four fewer meetings than we traditionally have.
Why don't we do this? Here's a suggestion on the meetings. I would ask, as a compromise, and I appreciate everyone's concern that, I, maybe I counted wrong, I only counted a difference of three. Why don't we add a March meeting? Can we try that this year, add a March meeting? I like the idea of, I agree with Mr. Liu, I've always been confused about business and educational meetings, makes no sense to me. I like the idea of having it categorized as regular meetings. If we add a March meeting, we are essentially, from what we did last year, if I'm counting correctly, we'll have 18 scheduled meetings for this coming year. Last year, we had 20. It's really not much of a difference. If we have to add something, we can add something. That, that's my suggestion. Anyone want to chime in on that? Mrs. Iaccone?
I would be amenable to that. I'm, I was sort of suggesting we should add something in in March, so I'd be happy, I wouldn't have an issue with adding them, based on the recommendation that's come forward to us in these dates. As the suggested calendar, I would be open to adding a second date in March.
Okay. Anybody else want to talk about that? Mr. Liu?
I just want clarity here, in that this draft here is based on removing, you know, I guess, Dr. Tittle, you're, you've removed these, this is the new calendar based on what you would have removed? I, I personally would like to at least wait until the next time to vote on this. Again, I, I think we need all of our meetings. It's easy to cancel the meetings, but to not have them there, I, I find is going to be much more difficult to get everybody back online again to have a meeting if we so need it.
Anybody else on this part? So it sounds, it sounds like some of us want to keep a regular schedule of traditionally two meetings a month, and some would be agreeable to do some type of adjustment as proposed by Dr. Tittle. Let me ask you another question and get some consensus or ideas from the board. With respect to business versus educational meetings, what's, what are your thoughts on that? Mr. Fattabene, can I, can I ask you your opinion on that?
I think there was a distinction between the education and business meetings, but I agree that may have gotten blurred. So I don't have a compelling problem with changing the name to a regular meeting. The only problem I have is with the agenda item then. And, and in other words, agendas were a little bit different between the business and the education, meaning the primary difference being in the, in one of them had the open board discussion. So to the extent that you would call it a regular meeting, in the agenda item for that regular meeting, I still would have a preference to maintaining open board discussion, because I think it's one of the only abilities we as a group can get together to informally talk about certain issues that may be important to us. Not that we want to cause any grief for anyone, but we'd have no ability under law to meet as a group and discuss things absent a meeting. So it's just an ability in which we can get a sense of what direction the board may want to go in. So I think, to the extent that if the agenda of that regular meeting included the open board discussion, it would probably be okay.
Okay. Mr. Carey, do you have any thoughts on this?
I'm fine with the regular versus naming the meetings. And I'm generally comfortable with these changes in total. The, you know, if, if we're going to go forward this evening and vote on these, I'd ask for one minor verbiage change on the, I'll give it to you on the page exactly, hold on. Wrong iteration, bear with me. The Cabe workshop language. You can help me with which page that was on. I had it marked up, but...
Seven.
Seven. The, the only thing, and it's very minor, but the only thing I would see there is, was it on seven? Yes, it was. What I put here was, new continued board members encouraged new Cabe sponsored workshops. I said, and, I would like to amend that if we're going to vote tonight, to include and/or other workshops approved by the board, just to not foreclose the opportunity to have workshops from other entities. That would be, I think the idea of having the workshops and having the training is a great idea. I just wouldn't want to foreclose the opportunity to have them from other sources other than Cabe itself.
So something like and/or other workshops approved by the board?
Yes. That's exactly what I had. Other than that, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with these changes. I, I understand the reluctance to make some of these changes, but, you know, when it comes to the advisory committee, you know, we, we had some discussion about that earlier, and we were talking about, you know, fuel for learning, healthy eating. We've got a wellness committee that the staff is engaged with, with the PTA council, and we have three committees that potentially could be touching this issue from, you know, I think, facilities to probably curriculum and policy. So, you know, I, I, I'm hard pressed to find an issue that we couldn't fit into our existing committee structure if we really wanted to, to work with it. I haven't seen, since 2006, when the changes made to subcommittees and advisory committee come up that I can recall, anyway, but I was out in the crowds, and you folks who are sitting up here might know better than I. So, you know, from that perspective, if we needed an advisory committee, I suppose we could put it back in, but I haven't seen the need for it, so I'm not sure, fit for that. In terms of meetings, I'm amenable to the, the compromise adding one in March. I think that that's fine. Other than that, I think that, this is, this is okay, the rest, written in the rest of it.
Mrs. Albin?
Adding the meeting in March is fine. And the regular meeting is fine. And I don't know, did you have questions on anything else in the document?
No, not me.
I'm fine, obviously, adding the meeting in March, as I stated earlier. And moving to a regular meeting is fine. I too, like Mr. Fattabene, would like to discuss what the agenda would look like for a regular meeting. So if we could have a, a more in-depth conversation about what the agenda looks like, that would be helpful. I agree with Mr. Carey not to rule out other workshops from other entities. We shouldn't, you know, limit it to just Cabe, since we're going, seem to be going through the whole thing. This whole going out to four different schools, that was my big, that was my big thing last year. That was me pushing for that. And the majority of the board agreed. And, oh, I understand the cost behind it, and I like Mrs. Albin's idea of having a PTA presence. I'm open to further discussion about this. I'm open to a compromise if it's, since it does cost money, if we want to cut it back to two. But I just, I think it's really important for us to be out there and be present, and I've made that known on many occasions, and I want to continue to follow through that, on that. That was a pledge I made to the public. And I am open to hearing other ideas of accomplishing it. If you don't think being on-site will do it, I will go down to two, if so be it, you know, in an effort to save money. And I am open to the PTA thing, but if the board's not open to the PTA thing that Mrs. Albin suggested as a bylaw change, then I'm going to push to, to, to do this, because I think we need to be there and out there, and whoever shows up, shows up. I think it's important. I already talked about the regular meetings. I do want to talk further about the agenda. I've made my comments on the open board discussion, and I believe that's the only thing. I agree with Mrs. Brand, she wanted to add in stronger language on the subcommittee. That's fine. I think Mrs. Albin had some suggestions about stronger language there as well. And that's that.
I'll skip me for now, Mrs. Zahn.
I agree with all of Dr. Tittle's proposed changes. As for members who submitted changes, I understand Mrs. Brand's reason for reemphasizing, but the same as Mrs. Iaccone's, it's, it's in there, I wouldn't necessarily add that. And as for Mrs. Albin's, I would add those.
Mrs. Brand?
I was actually just going to say, it's about quarter to eight, and I know, I know, I just don't know if we're going to be able to cover the whole document.
Probably not.
Right. So, I mean, I just thought, at this point, do we want to continue doing this, or, I just wanted to bring it...
What I want, yeah, I, I think what I want to do is just get a consensus, and then what I was going to suggest is perhaps we send it back to the policy subcommittee, if we have an idea of what direction we want to go. They can change the language and beef it up and get it out to us, and then we can vote on it at our next meeting. Is that okay?
You mean like get a composite?
Right, right, you're right.
All right. And, and do we go through all of Mrs. Albin's changes, or just, because some of them, I'm sorry, yeah, we got them online, but I know they weren't discussed. Okay. So do you want us, I mean, because some of them I agree with, and, and some of them actually I don't. Do you want me to go through those as well?
Sure.
Okay. All right, hold on, I'm sorry, I'll get those out. I think it spoke to seniority relative to doing professional development. I just think we're, it's something we always can learn, and I just think that it, board members have an equal place here. I think it's always beneficial to have professional development regardless of how long members have served. And I think in terms of the piece that Mrs. Albin's referring to for subcommittees, again, I'm not sure, I, I think what you're looking for is the charge with them and see if you want it changed. Because again, I want to be clear, when we go back to policy, you know, if you have something specific in mind, if you do, you know, please let us know.
Go ahead, Mrs. Albin.
Okay. No, it wasn't about the charges. What I am referring to is, for some time now, last eight or so years, there've been some things that have come forward, not from the administration, but that an individual board member has been to a conference, and they have heard of a study, and they've brought the information back to the board, and the board has, you know, sometimes a board member has had the ability to create work, I think there's a vibration, to create work for the administration and start us all down a path that sometimes we look back and we're trying to realize why we got there in the first place. It's, it's something like, if someone has a, a bill that they want to have passed in the legislature, there's a process. And so if there's something that comes forward from someone hypothetically has read a study on, on something with sports, and they feel we need to be doing it different in Fairfield, I think there needs to be a process for how that work starts moving forward, so that we don't start giving the administration a lot of work unnecessarily that sidetracks them from their regular work. Most of the work that... Most of the work that we do at the table is generated by the administration. So if there was some study that someone had heard about, about sports, they, maybe there's a process that they bring it, in part, some of what Mr. Fattabey's been talking about tonight, they bring it to this table, this board decides, we want to move forward, we're going to give it to a committee, something like that, something that is in writing, that's a little clearer, that provides some structure. That was my intent.
Yeah. Relative to the others, I think there was about, I see no reason to change the wording for number two and section three, and I see no reason to change the wording in number three, as well as number five. I would keep them the same as they are currently. But, you know, those are just, and as I said, you know what, as far as my own, I don't have any strong leanings. I mean, it already is in there, and, you know, I'll defer to board members' preference as far as that's concerned. And as far as the meetings, I really prefer, you know, we've had a lot of changes, and I just think this is going to be a big transition year, and I think it would be better if we waited out and not moved too quickly.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dow.
In regards to kind of joining budget and education, or business and education meetings to one regular meeting, I'm fine with that, too. Like we said, everyone else somewhere along the way, things got fuzzy, and sometimes you might have a little bit of both, that you need to combine it just because of, you know, time matter. For the meetings, I can see cutting some out, like, you know, summer, yes, we don't need to have a July one. I think adding back in the March one would be fine. The only other place I can foresee a problem, maybe, that we should maybe add one, and then if we don't need them, like someone was saying, I don't remember if it was Mr. Perry or Mr. Perry, Mr. Lou, or Mr. Fattabey, you know, if we all have it on our calendar and it's posted, you can cancel it if it's not necessary. But it's harder to pull one together. And I'm just looking from October 11th to November 22nd. In the fall, when schools just started, we're pretty busy, and that's a very long stretch of time. I don't know if one would want to be added again in October. I can see cutting out the November lame duck one where you meet after the election. I mean, that one's really kind of strange. I can definitely see cutting that out in November. But maybe there should be one added back in October, but that, like I said, is just something being thrown out there. Oh, open board discussion, yeah, I just feel that should be in there as well. We haven't used it as a way to blindside the superintendent, and so as other people have said, it's more of an informational time and time when we might need to discuss things. So I think that should be added back in. So I would also like to see what the typical agenda would look like. I'm okay, due to the cost of cutting out meetings on, at different sites, if it is costing $300 to $500 between, I presume, custodial fees and maybe because, and sound systems. At this time especially, I can't see putting out the money. Yes, it's nice to be in other schools, but I don't know how many more people we draw from those areas or neighborhoods just because we're in their school. So for the, for the cost, I would save the money and say I'm okay with, with cutting that out, except for the meetings when we know we need a larger auditorium, because something controversial is coming up, or something that we know is going to cause a lot of parents to show up. I don't know what else here I need to touch on. But we are going to have it brought back in before, so that, does that give you enough of an idea for now?
That's fine. Yes, thank you. Mr. Lou.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, I would like to just respond to what I think Mrs. Albin was saying, and to what Mrs. Brand had brought up, which was, I think one of the examples that Mrs. Albin was citing was an issue that I actually brought up, brought to the board, having to do with food and nutrition in our cafeterias, and I brought that to the whole board. That wasn't really to make more work for the administration, even if it might have ended up being more work, but it was to sort of understand a divide in information between what the last super was reporting in terms of going on in our cafeterias, and what parents and health advocates were reporting. And so I brought this to the full board. We had someone come in and make a presentation. It was in the hopes of educating us to understand what are the different concerns out there without necessarily pointing a finger. And it was the full board, which is the beauty of this, who worked as a whole. One person might have a lot of different ideas, but it's the whole board that comes up and moves things forward to say, yes, we should move this forward, and we use the advisory committee. This is one of the issues that we're now trying to say, let's get rid of, which I think was a valuable tool, to try to use as an unbiased sort of third party to investigate where this divide was. And I am very upset that this is being sort of disbanded by Dr. Title, because I do think it's still an unanswered issue. And it's no reflection on him, because I do think it was under the last superintendent, but I think it's, there are a lot of questions that we need to have answered, not to point fingers, but to make our educational system better. That's just my response to what that was about, and to why I think we should have advisory committees. In terms of the bylaws, I'm perfectly fine with calling the meetings regular meetings, and whether they're business or educational, I think that works fine. I do think the agenda has to be discussed. I believe very firmly what Mr. Fattabey was saying about that. I believe that open discussion should stay. I think it's an important tool for all of us to use, not to blindside anybody, but to bring up information that we have only this place to discuss information. Advisory committees, you just heard what I felt about that. And I agree, I still believe that we need to have that schedule of two meetings a month. And to, to support Mrs. Iacono, if, I have no problem with going to the schools. I mean, I think it, I think it does help PR. I do wonder sometimes if it is a lot of extra work, but sometimes that extra work is important. I would also like to then say, if that's the case, not only would I support that, but I would say, let's support continuing our two meetings a week, because this is a place where we can be out there. We can be present. We are here two times a month to be seen, to hear what's going on, and I think that's extremely important for the board.
The committee would like some direction. Mrs. Brand had comments on the first several items on my list. I have no problem with leaving that language just as is, so you don't even have to consider it. And the only other thing, just as a information, so you know, this mic seems to vibrate, is I took the language on professional development out of the American Board Journal. Some time ago, there was an article that discussed this, and many boards across the country are requiring professional development of their members based on their years, and some states have actually legislated it that way. Depending upon how many years' experience you have on a board, some states require a certain amount of professional development. Again, I think we make an, we make an attempt there with the language Dr. Title has, encouraging us to attend workshops, and if we want to stop there, that's fine, too.
Briefly, Mrs. Iacono.
Just 30 seconds, I forgot. On the advisory committees, I'd be interested to see what the RTM language is, how they cover it in their, in their rules to regulate. I just think this one here is a little bit cumbersome. I'm open to discussing this more, and if we could see the comparison between the language that they have and what we have, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Just real briefly, I'm, I'm okay with, pretty much with Dr. Title suggesting here. I would add a March meeting. I like the idea of a regular, regular meetings as opposed to business and educational, so I like the language that's proposed. I would support that. I'm somewhat indifferent on the advisory committees. I'd go either way on that. I don't, it's not that I don't care, but it's something that we don't really use too often, and I think all our subcommittees would handle that. I am, I am for keeping some type of open board discussion, and just to assure Dr. Title my six years here almost, there really hasn't been a situation that I can see where anyone's been sandbagged, but I appreciate your concern on that. So here's what I want to do. I want to, I would recommend that, we're going to vote on this at the next meeting, if the committee, when's the policy committee meeting again?
Our next meeting is the 10th.
December 10th?
Nope, the 9th, sorry. Oh, no. That's the one. Yeah.
Okay, December 9th?
December 8th.
I would, I would, my suggestion to the committee would be to, with respect to the meeting language, regular meeting language, add, and I think I'm going to have a consensus on this, and we need to vote one way or the other, a March meeting. And also come up with a proposed agenda that incorporates some type of an open board discussion. That would be my recommendation. Is everybody okay with that, that the subcommittee looks at that? All right. And then it would be my intention that we go through this document and vote on, on these proposed changes, up or down. Okay? Is everybody okay with that? And yeah, can we get the, can the policy committee get the RTM language on advisory committees, and, and you can look at it and send copies of that language to the board? Okay? Are we okay with that? Can we move on? All right. Next thing is, and briefly, where's the agenda, review, excuse me, discussion of board assignments. Here's, here's what I'm inclined to do with respect to that. I would like to, for the most part, keep the assignments as they are, although I am certainly open to whether people have a need to change because of scheduling difficulties or have a desire to change, and I would expect that you give me that information in the next week or two, and then after that, I'm going to make assignments. The one thing I do want to take back is, and I think it's important, is with respect to the FBA liaison, I would like to take that because I think that should be the chairman who's a liaison, so I'm going to assign that to me. Certainly, take a look at your assignments. If you want to do something different this year, let me know by next week, okay? And then I'll, I'll make assignments based on that. And I think that's it for that. Motion to adjourn this organizational meeting. All in favor?
No, two seconds.
Second, who seconded?
Tim.
Tim seconded it, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or adjourned? Next is Tuesday, November 23rd, 2010 business meeting. Okay. Call to order and roll call, we have Mr. Lou. Everyone's here. We already did that. We did the pledge of allegiance. Do we mind if we skip that again? We did that an hour or so ago. Approval of minutes, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the education meeting of November 9th, 2010. Mrs. Albin, seconded by Mrs. Iacono. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Carey.
Real quick typo. Last page, under section seven, I believe it's the eighth paragraph. Sixth sentence says, the committee has done walkthroughs at Riverfield and Howell and Taylor Witch Hare, H-A-R-E, I believe that's supposed to be, A-R-E, the next two schools before the committee. Just propose that we amend this by striking the H.
Is that a friendly amendment?
It's a friendly amendment.
I don't think we have to do anything official there. We, that'll be, that'll be documented. Bev, you have that? Thank you. Okay, with that, let's vote on this. Everyone ready to vote? All in favor? Okay. The next item on the agenda is old business, approval of policy, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 0521, nondiscrimination as presented at the November 9th, 2010 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Zahn, seconded by Mrs. Brand. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Public comment on this? Only on this issue? I see no public comment. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye, opposed? No one's opposed. The motion passes. Report of superintendent is next.
Thank you. I put at your places a proposal that's going to the State Board of Education for approval next Wednesday. It's a hot issue. It's really just an informational issue. The current law about kindergarten, children are eligible to enroll in kindergarten if they turn five by January 1 of that school year. And this is really out of step with the rest of the country, and there are proposals out there. The commissioner's made a proposal, and now the state board has a proposal to change that law, and it's summarized there. I just thought it'd be something that you should be aware of. The proposal is to phase in the admission date to kindergarten over four years, and eventually back it up sort of one month at a time for four years until October 1 is the cutoff date. And so for next year, there wouldn't be any change, but each year thereafter, it would back up by a month. So, you know, as things happen at the state, they can impact us greatly, and I thought that you would want to see this. I don't know whether this is going anywhere. It's something that if you have strong feelings about, you may want to contact our local legislators to weigh in, because eventually this is a statutory change, you'll have to go to the General Assembly. Normally, in the November meeting, you get a report on the strategic school profiles. You're probably wondering where they are, because I know they're hot. The state has massive issues with its data system, and the strategic school profiles have not been released yet. Since they haven't been released, we can't release them. So we are expecting that we will be able to get these to you at the December meeting. But those of you that are in board cycles every November, SSPs come out, you haven't gotten them, so just letting you know that's there. That's going to be probably on the December meeting. Given that at the next meeting, we also have the enrollment projections, presentation, and the audit, I don't think you'll have a big SSP presentation at the same time, but we, it will have them for you, and we can always discuss them in January. Also on the 14th, just, I'm not sure how we're going to cover this exactly. I'll probably send some staff over there, but planning and zoning is meeting, that's the night we anticipate they will vote on the Fairfield Woods application. We, a lot of us went to the hearing, and that is the 14th, but that's obviously an important night for all of us to be here, so we'll cover that one. We can't participate in that, but that, right, there's, it's, we'll try to get word. I'll try to get like a text message during the meeting and see if they approved it. I went to the Fairfield-Ludlow volleyball last Saturday night, and it was a fantastic match. Finals for the state tournament, Double L, Ludlow, Greenwich. The girls played great, everybody was great, the crowd was great, the fans were great. Unfortunately, we lost, but it was fantastic, and right down to the last point of the last game, it just, to me, it doesn't get any better than that. So just sportsmanship, it was just kids and coaches and fans at their best. So, that's kind of like my open board discussion. And remind you, we have next Tuesday, Nick Caruso. If you haven't done the survey, if you could please do that and mail that into CAE, he uses that. If you haven't, if you have no idea what I'm talking about, then email Bev, and she'll send you another one. It's, take you all 30 seconds to do.
Actually, all board members have one. I resent it again today.
Oh, okay. All right. And anyway, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Excuse me, from Mr. Matilda, Dr. Title, I just had, God bless you, God bless you.
You okay over there? Okay.
I just had a, there were a couple of questions I had. There were two things. One, I don't know whether or not you've received a rough draft from Prismatic yet.
One, I don't know whether or not you've received a rough draft from Prismatic yet. And also when we went to the CAE convention, God bless you again, they said that we have to be notified at the next meeting if there's any transfer of funds. I know we have a range in our, in our bylaws, so I actually think we need to have some kind of update in our financial status. Also, it's my understanding that special ed is right now in the hole, $1 million and funds are frozen. So if you can address this this evening, I would like to have an update on this soon.
Okay, a couple things. One is, what was your first question? About Prismatic. No, we're not, Prismatic is going to share documents with us for factual accuracy. We're not going to get their recommendations in advance. So the first time you see recommendations will be the first time I see recommendations. They're going to share data with us, they're going to share, you know, make sure that things are factually accurate, that they've interpreted it correctly. In fact, you'll probably hand it to you that night. We have a finance committee meeting coming up, Pam, December 6th, and I'll be sharing financial updates with them when we have it finalized. We have some concerns about special ed, but I'm reluctant to get into that without Bonnie and I want to bring that to finance committee if we have any recommendations on that part. And I believe for the last year, the board did its transfers, September, October, for the last fiscal year, so I think you've taken care of that housekeeping item.
Well, I guess my point was, they said that we couldn't wait that long, that's my point.
Yeah, I think we've taken care of it, what we had to do for the prior year.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce someone who I see a gentleman sitting over there, Dan Callahan, right? Nice to meet you. You're from Board?
Yeah, from the Board.
Okay, you'll be sharing these duties with Stephanie, I take it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nice to see you and we look forward to your reports. You don't get to do one tonight, unfortunately, but thank you for coming.
They do it every meeting.
That's right. I think there's nothing else on our agenda, so, oh, I'm sorry, I almost forgot that, I turned a page. Public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advance authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to specific members of the board. Decorum will be informed. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Is there any public comment tonight? Yes, sir?
J. Alfred Dunn. One item from the last meeting. Some of us are, or were unduly disturbed upon hearing the potential construction of tomorrow's tenements and what it will do to the structure educationally of McKinley. Fear not. Number one, the footprint of that construction will be as large as a moderate-sized postage stamp. Number two, residents trying to acquire a closet in that structure, the cost will be prohibitive, which is to say that undocumented agro workers will not be able to buy in. As for the others such as the financially disheveled and the chromatically incarcerated due to unemployment, they won't stand a chance. So being alarmed concerning the potential construction of a particular site, fear not, don't even have to say prayers. Now, one more thing. I personally was blessed and so was my daughter and my son, for they went to McKinley School. And McKinley School was the only school in Fairfield that prepared them, not for life in Fairfield, but for the life outside of Fairfield. So again, where does it say? Judge not, for so shall ye be judged also. All others want is the same thing everyone on this board and the audience wants, an education for their child. And one note before I depart, two meetings per month. A thousand years ago or so it seemed, the board only had one. People almost spent the night. I left one meeting at 1:00 in the morning, my wife called the police. That is why they went to two meetings per month. Now, I don't want you individuals to sit up all hours of the night and if you're married, be aware that the force costs money and you can't sleep in the street. But that is the reason why there's two meetings. And one more thing, oh my goodness.
Your time's up, sir.
Oh, okay. Have a nice stuffed turkey.
You, too. Any other public comment?
Ann Pascoe, FBA president. Just as a follow-up to Mr. Dunn, I've heard the potential agenda for December 14th, the Cangarden proposal, Prismatic. If we're going to have one meeting, as Mr. Dunn said, 1:00 is not out of the ordinary. I've been here 43 years and there have been 1:00 meetings. I would ask that when you build the agenda, if you see an item that you think will cause a lot of discussion, that you construct your agenda in such a way that we are not here till 1:00, because I do have to stay till 1:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else seeing no other public comment? Motion to adjourn. Second. Zahn, motion. Brand, second. All in favor? Aye. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.